Good evening. This is a call to order of the Board of Education meeting for Mount Healthy Board of Education, August 17th, 2020. Sorry, we're getting started just a little bit late. We're having a few Zoom technical difficulties, but we're ready to roll now. This is a virtual public meeting of the Board of Education in compliance with the Ohio Department of Health's stay-at-home orders. Ms. Brooks, could I have a call to order, please?
Certainly. Ms. Bryant?
Yes, I'm here.
Mrs. Ellis?
Present.
Mr. Glenn?
Present.
Mr. Kilgore? Dr. Turner?
I am here. And yeah, apparently, Mr. Kilgore will not be joining us tonight. I think it's possible he might join late, but it sounds like not. We're actually going to skip the Pledge of Allegiance because we're all virtual. So moving on to discussion of the agenda. Board members have had the opportunity to see the agenda prior to the meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So move.
Second.
Okay. That's moved by, actually, I'm not sure who that was moved by. Who was that?
Ms. Bryant.
That was Ms. Bryant. Okay.
No, it was Ms. Ellis.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm not the only one. All right, moved by Ms. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. Item five on the agenda is the reading and signing of the minutes. Board members have also had the opportunity to look at the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on July 20th. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
So move.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. All right. Item six, under Special Orders, Mount Healthy Teachers Association. Do we have Ms. Wakefield with us this evening?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we don't have anything from the Teachers Association. B is communications, announcements, and public inputs. Dr. Hawkins, do we have any communications or announcements?
We don't have any announcements. We did have some questions related to returning to school, and I can address them now or just later when we're talking about return to school.
Let's just, let's hold off until when you were going to talk about that.
Okay.
So item C, recognitions.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that Jana Wolf and her team, Jana is our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and she and her team were involved this summer writing a grant. We received the grant, and we now have a little over $1.5 million that we will be using for comprehensive literacy standards. So I just wanted to let our community know about that and just congratulate Gina and her team on their hard work. This is an extension to the Striving Readers Grant that you received a few years ago, and it's just an accomplishment for Mount Healthy.
Yeah, that's fabulous. Good job, Jana and her team, and it's really exciting for our schools. Item seven is Vocational Board Report. Ms. Ellis?
Yes. One of these days, I'll figure out how to get it to y'all ahead of time. Okay. Um, the August meeting of the Great Oaks Board of Directors was held in a combination of in-person attendance and online via Zoom and broadcast to the public on Facebook. This was in accordance with the recent state legislation temporarily allowing online public meeting. Restart Your Future 2020. The President, Harry Snyder, gave an update to the Board on Great Oaks' plan to start the school year for the fall 2020 with a blended learning model for the first quarter. And the Board also received a copy of the complete plan. They had to revise policies. The Board approved three new or revised policies as a result of new Title IX requirements or in preparation to reopen during the current pandemic. They are non-discrimination on the basis of sex in district program or activities, attendance, and the new was protective face covering during pandemic epidemic events. All the policies are available to the public on Board Docs. Great Oaks Education Foundation, during the 2019-2020 school year, the Great Oaks Educational Foundation awarded $21,000 in scholarships to 21 graduating students in amounts ranging from $500,000 to $40,000. Learning Grove at Scarlet Oaks. The Board approved in agreement with the Learning Grove to open a year-round early education and preschool center in the Farmer-Acorn Center space at the Scarlet Oaks Career, Scarlet Oaks Career Campus. This facility will be available for the benefit of the community, students, and staff. And Butler Advantage. Prior to the meeting, a number of Board members visit the open house of the new Butler Advantage Health and Wellness Center located on the Scarlet Oaks Campus. This health center is fully staffed and open to all Butler Health Plan members. I went to that opening, and it's pretty much what we've been trying to do with our wraparound services, and they have a whole section over there where they've opened it up for various parts, for mental health, physical health, and others that's open to, I guess, people in this Butler Health Plan, but it's also open to the students there at the school. That's it in my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellis. Up next, we have the Legislative Report. I only have a few items tonight. First, on the Governor's latest mask orders for schools. Governor Mike DeWine has ordered that all students and staff in Ohio schools must wear masks when inside any school building, outdoors at schools if unable to distance by at least six feet, waiting for buses if unable to distance by at least six feet, and while riding a school bus. Certain exemptions based on disabilities or medical conditions exist, and students are exempt when eating or drinking. This apparently applies, as the Governor previously announced, to all students over the age of two. The Ohio Emergency Management Agency is distributing 2 million face masks to Ohio schools.
Julie?
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
Who's going to be responsible for telling them they can't stand next to each other at the school bus stop?
I have no idea.
Okay. If we had another job.
The rule is there. There is no guidance that I'm aware of on who's enforcing it.
Okay, thank you.
Wi-Fi hotspot funding. The Ohio Controlling Board has approved Governor DeWine's request for $50 million from the CARES Act's Coronavirus Relief Fund to allow public and private schools to apply for a dollar-to-dollar matching grant with the state for Wi-Fi hotspots. I know that we've already been doing Wi-Fi hotspots, so I don't know if we have the need to look into that grant at this point or not, but...
We have actually already completed the application.
Okay, excellent.
If we can get money that way, we can use our other money in a different way.
I should have known you guys were already on top of it. Additional CARES Act funds. The Ohio Controlling Board has also approved $100 million to be used for COVID-19-related expenses. The funds will be distributed using a base amount established by fiscal year 2019 enrollment data from the state report card. Additional funds will be distributed to districts for economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities, and English learners. Transportation funds will also be allotted based on the proportionate share for each district's calculated transportation funds in 2018-2019. So it sounds like we should be eligible for quite a bit of, I mean, not quite a bit, but at least some additional funding through that. And that's the end of my report. So next, item nine on the agenda, we have the Report of the Treasurer. Ms. Brooks?
Thank you. Item A is the recommendation to approve the schedule of bills for July 2020.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Mr. Kilgore, you're muted.
I'm muted. Yes.
Thank you.
It's not my day, I'm telling you. You know, those kids that you see.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item B is a recommendation to approve the financial statement for July 2020.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. I have two items of information for you. State auditors have started the FY audit of our financial records, and so far, everything has been remote, but we'll see how that goes. And secondly, Plattenberg &amp; Associates have also started our GAAP audit for FY20, which will become part of the state audit as well. And that is all I have for you.
Um, let's see on here.
Yeah, you have...
Do I have something else?
Yeah, it's the...
A then-and-now payment for the...
Sorry about that. I did not bring home my paper copy. I have the old one.
I'll read it. So it's a recommendation to approve payment for the following invoice. An invoice from Amber Harris Reed in the amount of $4,400. This invoice is being received and paid under a then-and-now certificate in FY21.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
Yes, what is this invoice for?
This was for a program that Ms...
It was for seventh and ninth grade orientation.
Yeah.
That she conducted in July. She did it remotely, but contacted families throughout the late spring and early summer, and I was told that there was a good turnout about, you know, a lot more than they expected, but it was for orientations for the seventh grade and the ninth grade.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Any further discussion? And could we take a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
You're muted again.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And I believe that's all I have now.
That is all you have?
Thank you.
Item 10 is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Dr. Turner. So we want to start with an informational item about Champion's full daycare program, and I wanted to just give a little bit of background on why they would be doing a full-day program. So right now, the decision was made for us to be 100% remote until September 20th or around there so that we could see if the cases were increasing or decreasing of COVID-19. This decision to go remote for the first few weeks was made in collaboration from our administrators. We had Zoom meetings with all of our teachers in every building, listened to their input, and really took input from our community as well. Early in the summer, all of our community members could choose if they wanted their students to go in-person or remote, and about 50% of our student body, all the way across the board, chose remote learning. So that's a concern in the community about coming back in a traditional way in person. Right now, we have been planning very extensively to make sure that the remote learning is a success for our students. Every student will have a schedule. Every student will have their own Chromebook, and if you need internet access, you can contact Mr. Burdette, and we are working on having that available for our students as well. If students are participating in remote learning, they do not have to be in our traditional uniform, just appropriate clothing, whatever they would have at home during that time. Grading is going to be directly linked to mastery of the material. So the teachers, the staff, everyone will be putting a focus on making sure that our students understand the material and show mastery of that material so that they're not losing educational time. When it is safe for us to return, students will be socially distanced. We have already arranged for certain directions in the hallways. We have put in devices such as Plexiglas dividers in our elementary for grades K through six. We have enough for all the students who have said they want to be in-person. They will be still required to wear the mask per the Governor's order, as Dr. Turner mentioned. When we made the decision to go remote, daycare was a high priority because we know some of our families could not find daycare on just a short notice. Champion's does our before-school and after-school daycare. We talked with Champion's, and they have agreed to have a all-day daycare at South Elementary. The exciting part about this as well is that if our families receive vouchers from Hamilton County, they will accept the vouchers, and they can accept as many students that have a need. So some general information about Champion's. They will be operating from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. If you are paying, the cost would be $35 a day per child, or vouchers are accepted. So if you receive vouchers through Hamilton County, they will accept that voucher. They should also know that teachers and children will need to wear masks. So if you choose to send them to this program, they will need to wear a mask. Parents cannot enter the building because of the rules that are in place, and of course, they will be socially distant, distanced, and they will be helping our students with their academic work. So that's an advantage so that the students who are part of the daycare program can stay caught up with their work. For students who cannot click on during their scheduled time, which will be interactive and have a teacher there to help, the lessons will be recorded, and so parents can access them at a later time if you miss that time or if you just need extra information for the work. And food, we will be giving out information soon on how food will be distributed to our families that receive that service. So I think that's kind of a summary of where we are with starting school and the Champion daycare program.
Dr. Hawkins, if I could jump in for just a second, just so that people, because I know you and I have discussed this, and we know the ins and outs of it pretty well, but if people are wondering, well, how does that differ from just opening the school? This will be, I think you said the ratio was going to be nine children per daycare provider?
Yes, one to nine.
And there's no way we could do that with certified teachers. We just don't have enough certified teachers to do that kind of a ratio. So this is, these will not be teachers, they're daycare providers. The students will actually be, they'll be being educated by their teachers. It will be as if they were doing it from home, but it's to give them a safe and supervised environment if they don't have that at home because their parents are working or whatever.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Continue.
Thank you. The next informational item, we have some members that will be serving as our expulsion hearing officers for the 2021 school year. This year, we will have Bob Buckheim and Karen Green, and as well as Dr. Harris. Those will be our three staff members that if we have expulsions, they will serve as the hearing officers. The compliance officer for 504s, which are things under the realm of student services, would be Dr. Harris. He will be our coordinator for 504s for the 2021 school year. And then, this year, there have been a lot of rules that have changed with Title IX. One of the rules is that you need to post who will be working with Title IX for your school district. They need to be trained, and if people are interested, they need to know how they were trained. So for the 2021 school year, Karen Green and Dr. Harris will be our Title IX anti-harassment compliance officers. So I don't know, that was a lot right there. If anybody has any questions about that? Okay. So I also have a recommendation to approve the following resolution. And I'm just going to read through this. Whereas the Mount Healthy City School District Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for Mount Healthy Early Learning Center and wishes to approve the construction documents, having an estimated construction cost for the work of not more than $10,100,000. Whereas the Board of Education has appointed certain authorized representatives, the authorized representatives, to act on its behalf during the planning, bidding, award, and construction phases of the building projects. Whereas the Board of Education has contracted with a qualified professional design firm, S.H.P., the architect, under Section 153.65 to 153.71 Ohio Revised Code, to prepare plans, specification, and estimates of costs and such data as the Board of Education deemed necessary in compliance with Section 3318.091 of the Ohio Revised Code. Whereas the Board of Education on behalf of the State of Ohio now desires to commence the competitive bidding process for the bid packages for the project authorized under Sections 3313.46 and 3318.10 of the Ohio Revised Code. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City School District authorizes the treasurer to advertise and receive bids on behalf of said board as per specifications submitted by S.H.P. for Mount Healthy Early Learning Center.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right, moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
Yeah, how did you come up with the $10,100,000?
That amount is just the projected that the architects gave us. Our hope is that the bids will come in below that, and they said that they have been coming in below, but that estimate that we received from the builders.
They've been coming in below that due to COVID or other ancillary reasons?
They said that right now, a lot of places have put building projects on hold, and it is a very competitive time for contractors.
Okay.
Are being very competitive with their bids, which is great for us.
Indeed, indeed. Allows us to save some money.
Yeah, they want to keep their people working, so...
Right.
Any further discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Thank you. The next item is the recommendation to approve the remote learning plan for Mount Healthy City Schools. The remote learning plan was sent to each of you. This is a requirement by the Ohio Department of Education. We are choosing to do remote learning at this time. You have to file a plan with the Ohio Department of Education that gives just a general overview of what we plan to do, so I wanted to provide that for you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? And could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the recommendation that the Mount Healthy City School District participate in the Student/Teacher/Observer programs of the University of Cincinnati, Xavier University, Mount St. Joe University, Miami University, Sensai Christian University, Antioch College, Wright State University, Eastern Michigan University, and Grand Canyon University during the 2020-21 school year.
Do I have a motion to accept that recommendation?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? And could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the recommendation that Mount Healthy City School District participate in educational affiliation agreement with the University of Cincinnati College of Nursing to provide clinical experiences for nursing students during the 2020-21 school year.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Green? Mr. Green, Mr. Glenn? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. The next item is the recommendation that Mount Healthy City School District participate in a collaboration with the University of Cincinnati Center for Community Engagement to host medical science students during the 2020-2021 school year.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
Yeah, explain what this is. You said the students go and engage.
So this just gives the opportunity for students in the medical science program to come and work in our schools in a different capacity, much like student/teachers, and it also gives the opportunity for our students to go down and view different things with the university.
Okay, is there a cost for this service?
There is not. There is no cost.
Becky, is this how we've gotten the students the last couple of years who worked on the Wellness Committee? They were medical students.
Yes, they were medical students.
Okay. Any further discussion?
One other question. Are these students under a doctor? So if they, are they going to actually...
So if it's the same program that we've had the past two years, they worked on the Wellness Committee that Frederica Richardson runs, and they did all kinds of tasks for that, but no, they weren't doing any, any kind of like medical treatments. It was, it was helping out with the Wellness Committee. It was contacting people. It was trying to get vendors to come to the event. It was things like that. There was no kind of medical treatment involved.
Yeah, I was just concerned about liability if they put...
Yeah. No, they're not, they're not acting in a medical capacity, as far as I know. Any more discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
The next item is a recommendation to approve a science adoption from Amplify Science for grades three through six. The total cost for North Elementary is $37,714.47. The cost for South Elementary is $33,191.44. In the spring, a recommendation was put forth for a science program for North and South Elementary, almost a half million dollars. And Jane and her team took that quote and aligned it to the standards that we would be needing and covered, and so reduced it down to around $70,000.
Okay. Great. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
The next item is the recommendation to purchase 3,100 Chromebook cases for district Chromebooks that students will be using for remote learning. The total cost is $34,886.91, and we will be using CARES Act money for this purchase.
Do I have a motion to accept that purchase?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? And could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
I think he may be frozen.
I think he's frozen.
Okay. And Dr. Turner?
Yes, but we'll have to wait until Mr. Kilgore rejoins before we can continue. We should have some nice music to play or something during these little pauses.
Is anyone else having problems with freezing up?
I haven't had any trouble.
I am. So if I don't answer you, that's why.
Okay.
There we go. Somebody started some nice music.
Is somebody checking on Emma?
I'm not sure.
Texting Mr. Burdette. Mr. Burdette is talking to Mr. Kilgore right now.
Okay, thanks.
I could tell you about opening day, if you want to hear about opening day.
That would be great.
Okay. So today, we had our opening day celebration to welcome back our teachers, and we had a virtual opening. And it went really well. We had almost 400 people logged in, and we went through our Years of Service Awards, and we had a lot of staff that received that, as well as just looking at our new staff members. We had several new staff members that joined us, and it was very nice to get their pictures and just notice all of the different schools that they were part of. And so it was, it was a fun celebration, not in person. And of course, several people mentioned that they missed Frederica's breakfast, but I thought it was a nice opening to the school year. And then we moved right into training for our teachers to be the best remote teachers that they could be. So Becky, is there anything you can think of that you wanted to add?
I thought it went great and quickest one in my history.
When I, when I got close to the laptop and went into the kitchen, my husband said, you're not done already, because I had told him how long they usually take. And I said, well, without all the clapping and waiting for people to come up and get their service pins and all that, man, we flew through that.
Right. Yeah, it did go a lot faster. And we did recognize the Support Staff Member of the Year. That was Nan Wells. And everyone, you know, people wrote letters about that, and so that was a great celebration. And I, after the opening, I went around to the different schools and just popped in, talked to people. And Nan actually was with the teachers at North, even though she's technically retired now. And so she got to be with all of her colleagues, and they said she was just so excited when that was announced. So I thought that was a great celebration. And then our, our Teacher of the Year was Ed. Now I'm gonna say his last name wrong, Becky, if you want to help me. It's like.
Delayer.
Delayer. And, you know, he, it was interesting, because Nan had been with the district as a teacher, retired, came back for a very long time, and he had been with the district, I believe, six years, but yet already making such a positive impact for our students. So that was really exciting. I've been hearing about all of the things that they have been doing.
Yeah, and then we usually present, you know, the actual plaque and all that stuff later, and hopefully we'll actually be able to be in person by then to do that.
Yes, that would be great. I hope so.
FYI, Stephen, he should be calling in.
I'll go ahead and say while, while we're waiting, we had gotten some questions from a community member, and since we're not actually doing public input while we're doing these Zoom meetings, they didn't really have the opportunity to, to address us personally. But one of the questions was about whether our own students go to Mount Healthy Public Schools. I'll say, I think it's really nice that they think any of us, other than Mr. Glenn, look young enough to have school-aged children. None of us do, but I can say that both of my sons went all the way through Mount Healthy Schools, kindergarten through graduation. So did Ms. Bryant's daughters, I believe. And Mrs. Ellis, your daughter went all the way through, right? You're, you're muted. Carol, you're muted. So the answer to the question is that, that we had our kids in, in Mount Healthy Schools when we had children of that age, but none of us do anymore, and Mr. Glenn doesn't yet.
Yes. And one other question that did come up was regarding special education. We, when the students go to their orientations, which every student will have an orientation at their school, there will be people there that will go through the IEP and make amendments if necessary. And if it is necessary to provide an in-person service to meet the needs of students on IEPs, Dr. Harris will be working with the family, and we are planning to make sure that all of the needs are met that are listed in the IEPs.
Thank you. Mr. Kilgore, are you with us again now?
He's muted.
Muted.
He needs to unmute himself.
Mr. Kilgore, are you there?
He's still muted.
He is, I believe. You press pound to unmute when you're on the phone. Is that correct, Stephen? I'll double check. Yeah, so it says, uh. Stephen, can you go ahead and unmute Mr. Kilgore? So I can ask him to unmute, but I can't physically unmute him.
Hello?
Ah, there you are. Okay.
All right, you got back in.
No more.
Okay. Dr. Hawkins, do you remember where you were?
I didn't hear you guys, but for some reason, you weren't hearing me.
We were, we were voting on the Chromebook cases.
Okay.
And we just need Mr. Kilgore's vote.
I couldn't hear what you just said.
The Chromebook cases, the recommendation was to purchase 3,100 Chromebook cases for the district. The total cost, $44,886.91, and this would be paid for with CARES Act money.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Okay, great. The next item is a recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Hamilton County Education Center for an ELA coach, and the total cost, it's actually more than one coach, the total cost is $181,080. This is coming out of the grant funds, the Comprehensive Literacy Grant that we mentioned earlier, that was a little bit over $1.5 million. So these coaches are being paid for with that grant money.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
By Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And that's actually for three coaches. I should have said that. Three different coaches. The next item is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Hamilton County Education Service Center for an ESL teacher, and the total cost would be $41,000.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Celine Quinn for student engagement during the 2020-21 school year. The total cost is $40,000, paid for with Title IV funds. This program is to actually partner with our students and a lot of local agencies, where our students in all of the buildings will have an opportunity to create poetry, performance poetry, and then compete at the Holocaust Museum, at the National Freedom Center. Also, they are doing a partnership with Elements that's down in Cincinnati. This is a great opportunity for our students to have a way to express what they have been doing in their lives in a creative way and to recognize their voice, which is what we're trying to do with our student engagement funds.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Going to say moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore? And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the first reading of some policies recommended for Mount Healthy Board of Education. for Mount Healthy Board of Education on policy changes. The first one is 2260. It's been revised, and this deals with non-discrimination on the basis of sex in district programs and activities. The second is 3220. It has also been revised, and it deals with standard teacher evaluations.
That was just a first reading, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So next month, there'll be a second reading. And item. The next is the recommendation to accept the following donation for South Elementary students. We received a donation of $2,100, and that was donated by Mount Healthy Christian Church. So we're very appreciative of that, and I would like to recommend that we accept that.
I have a motion.
So.
Going to say moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
This is fantastic.
It is.
We very much appreciate it.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Great.
Could we have a vote, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Bryant?
Ms. Bryant? She said that she's been freezing up a little bit.
Okay, I'll go on with the vote and then.
She might be back. Kim, are you there? Nope, apparently not.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Yay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
I froze up. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we figured.
The next item is the consent agenda, and there are several things listed there for the board to review.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please? Oh, sorry, was that? No? Okay, could we take a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. Item 11, addendum to the agenda, we don't have any. Item 12, special orders, we don't have any. Item 13, open discussion by the Board of Education. Actually, I guess the one thing is coming up in a second, so I guess we don't have any. Item 14, Board of Education report. The first item is the date of the next Board of Education meeting. Will be Monday, September 21st at 6:00 PM. As usual, we need to discuss, do we want to have that as a virtual meeting? Do we want to go ahead and schedule it as an in-person meeting? Or would we like to wait a couple of weeks and see what's going on and make the decision at that point?
Well, as much as I'm here in front of the computer, so I'm just going to go with in-person meeting.
And I agree. With all the in and out and freezing up, we probably, I don't, I don't exactly want a crowd, but I do want us to be in person.
Okay, well, we could do it the way we did the first meeting after the the stay-at-home orders or whatever went in place, which was we were at the board office, but then it was livestreamed and recorded, but without an audience there. So I think we could do it that way, if that's okay with everyone?
Do each of us have to be there, or can some of us opt for the remote option?
So under the current law, anyone can be whichever place they want to be. So if someone would prefer to be remote, that's fine. We just have to go by those same rules that if, if you're, if you start the meeting and then you lose your connection, we have to stop the meeting until you can rejoin. But yeah, you're perfectly welcome to be wherever you want to be.
Okay, yeah, I'll take the remote option, but I'm all for whoever wants to be in person do that, especially with their connectivity issues. It just makes sense.
Okay. We'll plan on that then unless something radically changes between now and then. Okay, item B is a discussion concerning fall sports. The administrators had made the decision that since we're starting the school year all remote, that we would also not be having fall sports. At least as long as we're remote, we won't be having fall sports. We apparently had some people who were a little concerned about that. So we were going to have a discussion on it, and Mr. Glenn, would you care to start?
Yeah, I'll go first. Yeah, I had multiple parents, coaches, students, and alumni reach out to me via phone call, text messages, Facebook, as well as emails. No concern, expressing their concerns on wanting to move forward with having an athletic season, or if not a season, they'll continue to train. But then also do what similar school districts have done, which is leave it up to the parents to decide if they would like their kids to continue to participate. And then I know that Governor DeWine is making an announcement tomorrow that concerns high school sports. And then a similar school district to ours would be Middletown. And then I know a couple of weeks ago, they decided to cancel their fall sports. But then around two or three days ago, they decided to let them continue with the instruction of their coaches. So I highly recommend that we allow instruction on our end to continue. And then if depending upon what DeWine announces tomorrow, as well as what our conference decides, that they are be allowed to participate in their season.
Okay, Dr. Hawkins, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, so one thing that Mr. Glenn mentioned, which is important. Middletown had suspended their practices and their competitions. As he is allowing them to practice at this time, they have not made the decision on whether they can play or not. A couple of things that we need to just keep in mind are contact versus non-contact. The governor as a whole has given a lot of leeway to non-contact sports such as tennis. The contact sports, which are football and soccer, are more of a concern. We did reach out to the Health Department just to make sure what guidelines, if we decide to allow students to continue practicing, which they have been practicing up through today. There was a rule that was put in place by the governor's office at the end of July that said that for contact sports such as football, that in order for those students to compete in a competition, every student on the team would need to have a negative COVID test before every game. So that would be the responsibility of the students to do that. If you have good health insurance, your insurance may cover that many tests. If not, the students would have to pay for that themselves. I wanted to let you know what the Health Department said as of this afternoon. And as Mr. Glenn mentioned, the governor tomorrow could lift this requirement. Right now, it said that the requirement for mandatory testing has not officially been lifted yet by the state. Regional OHSAA representatives feel that this will happen, but it has not happened yet. Governor DeWine will have the press conference tomorrow. So it could be that at that time, that was lifted. Some of the school districts in our conference have chosen to allow their students to go ahead and play contact sports, but the parents then would sign a waiver. The other teams in our conference, that's what they have chosen to do. So initially, since we did not feel that it was safe enough to have students in school, that's what led to us feeling that it was not safe to have students play contact sports. Last week, the cases in Hamilton County did, in our zip code, did increase. The average did go up. At this time, if the board feels that we should allow them to continue to practice, we could spend a week or so checking and seeing what's going to happen with the cases and allow parents to make that decision. Our conference for football, which most of the concern is revolving around football. Originally, our first league game was 9:25. The league has changed that to have a condensed season. And so the first competition would actually be, I think, 8:24, 8:25. They have moved it up so that all the games can happen, and then everyone would be part of the playoff. So that's a current update on where we are with football if we move in that direction.
Dr. Hawkins, could?
I'm sorry, Julie.
Could you also just share, because I think the board is aware, but a lot of the public who might be watching or might watch this later aren't. Could you share what happened a few weeks back in regards to the football players?
Thank you. At the beginning of July, we had a positive COVID case. And at that time, our football players were practicing in small pods. Every student in that pod ended up getting the virus, and then they did transmit the virus to their family members. Since then, we have not had another positive case reported to us. The concern is that the virus is very contagious. And so if we do have a case, it will go through the players as well as the family. I think that's what we've seen on the national level where they have canceled a lot of the football seasons because of that situation. In addition to our team, we know who's been practicing together, but we don't know from the other teams. So other teams would be coming together in contact sports like football, and we would have no indication unless they maintain the negative COVID case requirement if they have been taking appropriate safety precautions or not. If they do not lift that requirement, I just want the families to really understand what that could mean. If we have six games plus playoffs, and you don't have insurance to be tested, you would have to go somewhere like Children's, and that's going to be about $100 per test per time. So minimally, to get through the season, it would be about $600, and then whatever the cost would be with playoffs. So that is a significant cost that some of our families would have to endure if the, if that is not lifted. That may be lifted tomorrow. The governor was supposed to give a press conference regarding sports last Thursday, which we had hoped would happen, and he delayed it until tomorrow.
And also, anyone who's been paying attention to the news knows that getting a test and getting the results to the test are two completely different things, too. We hear stories about people having to wait a week, even two weeks, to get their results back. And if that were the case, then the student wouldn't be able to play. Well, if you get, if you get your results back two weeks after you took the test, you would need to take another test by that time anyway, because it would be irrelevant. Mr. Kilgore, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I did. For the football team, are they working on their conditioning now?
They are. They have been practicing together, and they have not, we have not stopped practice yet at, to this point.
Okay, are there any pre-tests before these guys take the field, like the temperature? Some kind of random test to see that?
They are. They are doing a symptom screening, and in compliance with the Health Department, we, after we had the positive case, they reviewed our procedures. Many teenagers don't actually have a fever when they have the virus. So we have been screening for fevers and asking our students for other symptoms, and we have not had any other symptoms at all reported to us since the July incident from.
Why did we test the one end of July? How would you cap that athlete?
They actually self-reported to us. They had been at practice on a Tuesday and had found out that someone, they had tested on Wednesday, they found out that next weekend, and they just chosen not to return to practice because they were feeling bad. So they self-reported to us.
Dr. Hawkins, did any of the other pods have anyone check positive?
They did not. And at that time, they were working in smaller groups. The phases have changed now, so they're more together. And in competitions, you know, obviously, they're going to be in contact with each other and playing regular. But at that time, we did not have any other pods that tested positive. So Coach Crouch and his other coaches, they did a great job maintaining social distancing at that time and making sure, for instance, like when a group went through the weight room, one pod would use a group of the equipment. They would wipe it all down before the next group went through. So I do want to just, you know, recognize that the work that they did prevented that from spreading to other groups.
Okay, thank you. I think we want to give the kids every opportunity to play. And working along with their parents, because that's a tough decision for them to make also. But I think right tonight, it's just too many things up in the air to make a final decision. You know, we need to find out what the governor is going to say. We have to find out how in the world, if, if this ruling about the testing curve before each game, if that's going to still stay in place. Until we get those answers, I don't think we'd be fair to make a decision right now.
I, I agree. I, I also, as long as cases are rising, I mean, to me, we, we gave Dr. Hawkins the full authority to make the decision about what to do academically with the new school year, to use her best judgment along with her team. And, you know, they had everything all worked out to start with a hybrid model, some kids at home, some kids in school. And as the situation in Hamilton County, and especially in our zip code escalated, she made the very wise, I think, decision to go all online to begin the school year. I, I don't see looking at sports any differently. As long as cases are going up, as long as our zip code in particular is a hot zone, I, I just don't see taking a chance, because it's not just taking a chance with the players' health. We know that for the most part, kids, teenagers, don't tend to get as sick. But the science is showing now that anyone over the age of 10 can transmit the virus just as effectively as an adult can. And I just absolutely would not want, I, I wouldn't want any of our players to get exposed. Maybe it would be at practice, but even like Dr. Hawkins said, even if, even if we're being incredibly careful on our end, then we have a game, and we don't know about the players on the other teams. And if a player gets exposed and takes this home, and a parent or a grandparent gets infected and ends up in the hospital, ends up dying, I, I think it's not worth the risk. And I'm not talking legal liability. Yeah, we can have them sign waivers and all that. I mean, the actual risk of having that happen and, and having it be something that we could have prevented.
We could, until tomorrow, allow practice to happen and then make, you know, I can make that decision when we have the govern, hear what the governor has to say. But, you know, it's up to the board how you want to proceed.
Well, what we could do is go ahead and take a vote now and just have the vote be that, that we are willing to let Dr. Hawkins make that decision. willing to let Dr. Hawkins make that decision based on what the governor says. Um, or we could take a vote as a board and say, you know, if, depending on what the governor says tomorrow, we could go ahead and say what, what we're willing to do uh, with different scenarios that, that the governor might present.
I would like to, uh, have the board vote on, I don't want to put all that responsibility on Dr. Hawkins. Even though she's probably up to taking the responsibility, I just don't want to throw that on her, her plate right now.
Okay. Uh, in that case, I would propose, um, well, I'll, I'll let somebody else propose, uh, the wording that they would like to, to see.
It's all we voting, uh, is whether, you know, if Mike DeWine says sports can continue versus if he says something otherwise?
Well, if, if he says they can't continue, then that's, we have no say in that. So if, if he says they cannot continue, it doesn't matter what we vote, they can't continue. So basically what we would be voting on is if the governor doesn't, doesn't put a lockdown on sports, are we willing to let sports, contact sports continue in the district even while we're remote?
I would say that we propose a resolution or proposition to leave it up to the parents of those athletes.
Um, I don't think we can actually do that. I mean, the parents obviously get to decide one way or the other, but if the board is taking this responsibility, then it has to be the board's, um, then I think we need to say yes or no. Either, either sports can go forward or they can't.
Okay.
So right now, it kind of looks like depending on what the governor says.
Yeah, it is very much depending on what the governor says. But Becky, if, if we want to put in, um, let's say a resolution saying that if Governor DeWine allows contact sports to go ahead, uh, the Mount Healthy City Schools, or, or the, the, the Mount Healthy City School Board approves going ahead with contact sports even while we are doing remote-only learning. How's that for wording?
Um, I didn't hear anything, but can I ask, Dr. Hawkins, how, how, how would you like to go forward? Cause I, I've been frozen for like the last three or four minutes. I, I haven't heard anything.
I, I support the board making this decision. Um, you know, if, if Governor DeWine says that it's the local decision for the board, then as a board, if you want to say teams can continue practicing and competing, as long as they're following the rules that are set down by Governor DeWine, the Athletic Association and the CDC, with the understanding that that could involve a financial cost for our students to continue. You know, if we're following the guidelines of the governor, the Ohio Athletic Association and the CDC, if we're not going to cancel sports, I feel like that's all we can do to make it safe for our students.
And, and we would have to make it
Go ahead. Um, this testing, are you saying that in one of those three that you mentioned, they are saying that they have to be tested every day?
They have to be tested before each game and they're supposed to have the testing results back seventy-two hours before the game. Now, right now, Children's Hospital is doing some testing that gives a quick result. I was talking to Mr. Buckheim today and he said that some people say the, um, saliva test might be available in a very short amount of time. This could be lifted and most schools and coaches have been asking for it to be lifted. It has not been lifted yet. So if it were to remain in place, all of the contact sports, so football and soccer.
And basketball.
And basketball, if we go into basketball season, they would have to go somewhere, get a test with a negative result before they could compete in the competition. So the, the fastest place around here, I believe, is Children's Hospital. I know many college students had to have a negative result to return to campus and many of them utilize that service. Now, that could be lifted, so if we want to say that we're going to follow the governor's guidelines, the Ohio Athletic Association and the CDC, whatever they may be, whether they lift that guideline or whether they don't, then I think we're fine with that. And then that does, you know, a parent can always make the choice to not allow their child to play if they feel that there's a danger.
Right.
Do you have very many parents that don't want their kids playing?
I don't know that we have that.
Yeah, I haven't heard any of that.
I, I've talked to two parents that made the choice to pull their child. They were sophomores and around that age group, but that's the minority.
Hmm.
Well, and we do, I believe you, you, you told us, uh, told Mrs. Ellis and I last week that there are actually parents who are, who, when we thought we were going to have some in-person learning, we had, we had athletes who were choosing in-person learning, but wanted to play the contact sports.
Uh, the opposite. They were choosing
The opposite.
Hmm.
They did not want
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Right.
They wanted remote learning to be safe, but they also still wanted to play contact sports.
Right. So, um, Kim, are you still with us?
Who?
Kim?
For the, yes.
Okay.
Yes, for the moment.
Okay, Becky, could you read back the resolution that we'll be voting on?
Becky, you're muted.
I'm mute.
Okay. The resolution, um, is hinging on, well, I won't say hinging. If Governor DeWine allows contact sports, that's the contact sports can go ahead. Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City School District will allow the contact sports to continue even while there is remote learning. And I
Remote only.
Pardon?
Sure, make sure it says remote only.
Remote only. Uh, do you want to add in there with the understand that there could be a financial component to this?
Sure, let's add that in there. That, that, the, the parents would be responsible for, would potentially be responsible for the cost of testing.
Hmm.
And that may eliminate a lot of them that way too. I don't know if I, as a parent, parent, I would be forking over a hundred dollars every time my child wanted to play a game. If we can't get them to pay for, uh, play fee for playing, I don't know how you're going to get them to pay a hundred dollars to have the child tested every game. You, you're talking about six hundred dollars. I love a lot of things, but I don't know if I'd spend six hundred dollars just to keep doing it.
All right, but also, yeah, but also what if that's the only thing the child, uh, is doing?
On that expense.
Does the, uh, athlete now have insurance for injuries or anything like that?
Uh, athletes do have, inch, you know, some athletes have it insurance through their family. Other athletes can actually buy a temporary policy through the school. But that's more for, like you mentioned, Mr. Kilgore, an injury that happens with the sport. I don't know, I don't think that involves COVID testing. If a parent has private insurance, it probably would pick that up. The gap will be like what Ms. Ellis mentioned between students whose families may not have very good health insurance and those that do.
Well, and insurance might not pay for it six times.
Right, right. They may pay a couple of times, but.
Yeah. Okay, is everyone satisfied with the wording of that resolution as it stands? So that, so the wording of the resolution is saying that we will let sports go forward. So if you want to let sports go forward, you're voting yes. If you think we should not let contact sports go forward, you're, you're voting no. Just to make sure the, the wording is clear to everyone. Everyone okay with the wording as it stands?
That's with the approval of the governor, correct?
Well, yeah, obviously. The, the, the governor can override anything that we say.
Yeah, I have a question before we vote. If there isn't a season, are they still allowed to practice? And well, now I'll say if there isn't a fall season. So say, oh, football has to be played in the spring, are they allowed to still practice now?
I mean, I, we have been allowing them to practice with all of the safety precautions. If the Ohio Athletic Association came back and said, okay, we're moving. I don't think they will, or they wouldn't have taken such a strong stand on trying to get the season in.
Hmm.
What Coach Crouch explained to me, they're trying to go ahead and get in a shortened season so that everybody can go to playoffs and do it very quickly. Because they want to do it as fast as possible. Cause my question was, well, couldn't we delay it a little bit? But they're wanting to get it, the season through as fast as possible. So I don't think they will say, let's hold off until the spring. I think that they're trying just to go ahead and push through unless the governor comes through and says no. But if they were to make that decision, they may say practice couldn't start until December. Or they would have their own guidelines and we would definitely follow the guidelines.
Okay, understood.
Um, I'll also add, uh, just, just so we're keeping this in mind. If we do end up going back to the, the split model with families who want their children educated at school can have them in school and the ones who want to keep them home can keep them home, which was the plan we were going to do until we went all remote. Um, under the state guidelines with that, if we have a single case with any student, uh, any, any person living in the household of the student or any staff member, the entire school closes down for two weeks. So, uh, when we're talking about bringing teams together to play against other teams and we don't know if they've been taking the precautions, uh, we're not just, uh, i- if we end up where students are back in school, um, that's also another, uh, you know, just if, if a football player tested positive, it wouldn't just be that we don't play football for a few weeks. It's that we have to shut down that school entirely for a couple of weeks. If that student has been in the school or in contact with anybody connected with the school. So that's another thing to keep in mind. Um, are we ready for a vote?
Uh, we need a motion.
We need a motion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Becky.
Moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. We've already basically had the discussion. Do we want to add any more discussion before the vote? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Unmute yourself.
She might be frozen.
Yes. She was right. I wasn't muted.
Oh, wow.
Sorry.
Mrs. Ellis?
Was that a yes vote, though?
Yeah, yes, it was for me. Yes.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
No.
Okay.
All right. Uh, so we'll see what the governor says tomorrow. And I think we are at item fifteen now, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
I'll say moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mr. Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.